Welcome fellow councillors to this meeting of the Heritage and Town Events Committee, which is being held today on Thursday 6th of April, you're almost welcome. We'll head off to the first item on the agenda, which is declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interest to receive any additional interest not already registered. Obviously if anything should arise during the course of the conversations, please feel free to indicate. Apologies for absence please Karen.
Apologies received from councillor Park.
Thank you. And then we move on to the minutes of our last meeting, which was held on the 16th of February and were received by the council, full council on the 28th of February. These have been circulated previously a couple of times, page one, page two, page three and page four. Are we all happy that there are true, fair and accurate record of that meeting? Thank you. We then move to the financial report. Congratulations team, under spent. Still delivering a comprehensive package of events for the town.
Well done to the chairman and that for looking after the budget.
It's a team effort.
It is a team effort. But we could say no, we haven't got the money. Taking charge, being able to advise us on our spending. Is that the words I'm looking for?
Thank you councillor Hollis, I think it is.
And obviously the officer as well.
Absolutely, we are nothing without guidance.
Officer rather, officer of the thing.
So as you'll see, yes, there is a lower side on the income. I have not been as prolific in gathering pounds, shilling and pence off of people. But what we have done, and I'm really pleased to say that we had a further eight volunteers training with the Norfolk Reading Project. So there is a committed legacy in this town from that support to our young people in their reading. Yes councillor Hollis.
And again, as mayor, you've actually succeeded in what your aim was at the beginning of your mayoral year.
And I have to say, great for the support from the staff.
This is it, and again, it's a team effort between, but yes, congratulations. You've actually achieved what you set out to do, well done.
The irony, a politician doing exactly what they said they would.
I know.
Obviously we do have the mayor's ball coming up and thank you to those who are either able to support by coming along or have been able to support in terms of raffle prizes. So incredibly grateful for that as well. Are there any questions on the expenditure side of things? David previously highlighted within the town events and the Queen Jubilee expenses, that kind of all wraps up into that. But are there any other questions, queries or comments there? We have committed as per those minutes, an element of our underspend to extending the table here because we will have two more representatives. May the fair.
Just wanted to make sure David's got the cost, those pull-ups that we're looking to do.
Yeah, the costs are, the costs are in there. There's a couple of little tweaks Alan's still got to do, as chair has said, you know, there's the mayoral allowances and things that needs a little bit of tweaking once we get through the events. The town events, I'm going to go on to just a quick update of our last event of the year, which was the steampunk event, I think because again, we generated a bit of income to offset the expenditure that we needed. I think there's about nine hundred pounds extra to go on there. But as we're seven and a half thousand pounds down on budget, there's plenty of money there to cover those. So we've done quite well in terms of generating some income as well as just spending the budget. And as chair said, hopefully people have enjoyed the events that we've done with a lot more to come in the next year.
And I think that's obviously been as a direct response to challenges placed by this committee, saying yes, we do want to do that, but we're mindful of the cost on the public purse. And those opportunities to generate income have been explored where appropriate. So I'm really grateful for all of the team because I know it has been a huge team effort across the whole council to deliver those. And certainly our heritage officer has been doing a fantastic job as well, bless her.
Keep that in mind.
Anything else on the numbers?
Not for me.
In that case duly noted, thank you very much. We then move on to the approval of the project's budget. It says to approve the project's budget for the year's ended. Obviously these were approved via full council. So it's just to note for going forward, where we are and the challenges that we may face. Is there anything you'd like to pick up on?
No, the only thing that's outstanding that's still to be done, and I think Alan's got it underway. Hopefully he will because in a little over a month's time or a month's time, there'll be another couple of councillors sitting at this table. And we did talk about the extra leave for the table, otherwise it'll be a bit of a squash. But I'm sure he's got it in hand.
Thank you. So we then move on to town events. Obviously you did just provide us with an update on the steampunk side of things. Is there anything else?
Yeah, all I want to say is, you know, we, because of the underspend, we wanted to put Steampunk in last year, September of last year, we did our first one as part of the Heritage Festival. It was a roaring success. All the guys really wanted to, to come back again. So we thought we'd put one on in March, which was their suggestion because it doesn't, you know, they've got quite a hectic calendar of steampunk events that they travel around. So we had it a couple of weekends ago. The weather wasn't the greatest, it was a little bit indifferent over the two days. But everybody thoroughly enjoyed it. There were some great performances. I actually attended the Friday night one, which was the Jack the Ripper one. And I know Barbara did as well. I thoroughly enjoyed it, it was a fantastic turnout again. People seem to like that kind of stuff, I do. And there's a lot more to come. The good thing also is, and this was a, this was a nice little aside to the actual event. I was talking to some of the traders on Saturday and even though the weather wasn't great, because they had the steampunk activities as well, two of our regular traders said that one had done very well. The other one actually said that she had taken more income that day than she's ever done attending Thetford Market. Now, steampunk is not the biggest event that we're going to be doing. So hopefully that's a marker for some real successes outside the actual event and actually benefits the rest of the town. So that was a, that was a nice little anecdote from one of our traders. And also the steampunk traders again said that they love coming to Thetford and they are very colourful, as you see in the slide, they, they create a buzz around the town. So we will carry, continue to do steampunk and hopefully that will be part of our calendar of events going forward. Don't know whether anyone else is.
Let me start.
Just to say, on the Saturday, I came down to see the steampunk and everything. And in the tea room, we had a really nice lady who sang some very interesting songs.
I didn't understand them all.
A lot of you I think.
But it was very, very good.
She actually is coming back at Whitson because she also does a really quite quirky folk band. So she's going to come back as one of our performers at Whitson. But again, thoroughly enjoyed coming to Thetford. Really had a good response, not just when she was singing, but you know, interacting with people. And she's actually coming back to do some performances at Whitson at a very, very reasonable price. She enjoyed it that much, so.
I shall ask you to explain some of her songs to me.
Katie did, you know, she did tell me about some of the lyrics and again, I'm with you Dennis, I didn't quite understand what it was.
Lovely voice and.
Super, any other comments on the? I think I reiterate that point, that anecdotal evidence from a market trader, that this is about improving footfall into our town centre. There are the economic benefits as well as the leisure benefits and the resident benefits to that. So yeah, I think it's really important that we continue supporting all of our businesses in that way. Thank you. Right, we then move on to the next agenda, which is town events that are coming up next year, this year.
Yeah, this year. So the first one is King Charles III's coronation event over the weekend of the 6th and 7th of May. We're actually doing a live screening on Saturday the 6th from the marketplace. There will be some other stalls as well as our own market traders. So again, there should be a good bit of activity in and around the market square that day. And then on the Sunday, we will do our part of the big lunch celebration nationally, we'll do the street party. Because there was the issue with the weather last year and it was later with the Queen's celebration, we are going to instill a contingency because some of the feedback was that they were quite pleased due to the bad weather, we could decamp to the Carnegie for the entertainment. But obviously people come along with their picnics and all their bits and bobs and it was theatre style that we watched that performance. So we are limiting the reserved tables to a number that we can take into the Carnegie with tables. So people, if the weather is really awful and we have to decamp to the Carnegie, they can take their picnics with them and they can, we can just carry it out indoors. But what it does mean, we have to advertise the fact that those who haven't reserved the table, that option won't be open to them. But it will give people, it will be a lot more space for people to bring down their own tables and chairs and picnics and things and enjoy the celebration if they so wish. So that's what we're going to be doing on the coronation weekend. World War Two is an event that's running from Friday the 12th of May through to Sunday the 14th. And in tandem with partners like the Dad's Army Museum, they will be having Jonesy's Band on the market square and some of their volunteers dressed up. They'll obviously be doing activities in and around the museum, outside the museum with music and things. We'll be having the Carkey Devils, who are a group of people that again, dress up and do lots of interaction. They're also bringing their World War Two paraphernalia under their camo tents and things. So that will look really good. Aria Follington are coming along. There is a world war play that's being performed on the market square. And in the Guildhall Large Court, there's a military affair. So hopefully there's plenty going on. On the Friday night, we've got Jeffrey Holland in the Carnegie, who's regaining some of the types of sitcoms and things that are in and around and based on that time of the century. So, so there's plenty going on that weekend as well. So that's the next big event. And finally, the next one, I'm not going to go through the whole campaign, but the next one to look forward to in May is the back end, which is Friday the 26th to Sunday the 28th, which is our Whitson weekend. And we again, on the market square, will have Morris dancing. We've got a huge dragon puppet coming along to entertain the kids. There will be other performances and bands, storytellers. There's a big display on the canvas that's coming from Grimes Grains and they're going to do two or three events through the year with us. So there will be some displays and some hands-on activities with their helpers. There's going to be some activities inside the Guildhall and a continental market down the High Street as well over those full three days, Friday to Sunday. So again, hopefully we'll finish off May as our first series of events with quite a big activity that we can generate footfall. We are advertising wider for that particular event because of the continental market. We hope that that will draw a lot more people into the town and hopefully all the town can benefit from that. Yeah, so is there any questions on?
Brenda.
Just the one, you said something about a plane.
A plane, sorry, a World War One plane.
Oh, it sounded like you said plane and I was thinking Brenda was getting all excited there.
I mean.
Really?
Fire, a bit fire up there.
Did you think he said plane?
No, I meant plane. I don't know whether Aria Follington might be landing a plane in the market. They are coming along.
Plane, right, a plane.
Can we have a Lancaster bomber?
Yeah, I'll try my best, yeah.
Any other questions please team?
I think they're great events.
At least they're good to start.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Can I just do a bit of horizon flagging? So next year 6th of June is the 80th anniversary of the D-Day landings. I understand that Padraig Rasta is starting to pull stuff together. Can we make sure that that doesn't fall off of our radar please? Because I think that's a significant event and especially as sadly, most of our veterans from that period are no longer with us. A significant turning point in that conflict and I think we would be well placed and remember.
Anything else please team about the town events coming up?
Just felt unsful.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Reach of the town, who'd have thunk it?
Fantastic work.
We'll move on to the civic events and it's quite nice to just be able to sit back and go, let's do it, it's kind of in your department now, I'll have that.
So can I, can I just say that there is no slide for the civic events, I've just noticed, which, which is not too good, but anyway, I just, I, just sorry, just to stand up for a second. I really only wanted this side to go on just because we've had a few changes with mayor making and it's all around the election and if new councillors are elected, which we know there will be because several of you sadly are standing down. So we know there's going to be a turnover and it's all about induction of new councillors and et cetera, et cetera. So, so publicly, I just want to say, mayor making is now not on a Friday for the first time since I've worked for the council anyway. It's now Wednesday the 17th of May. The civic reception will be Friday the 2nd of June, followed by the civic church service and reception on Sunday the 4th of June. So there are the three dates I just wanted to, to highlight, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I think you'd like to add a?
Be good, be premature.
Yeah, noted. Give them a bunch of these town updates. Again, David, after you.
Right, so I know this was, or a fuller presentation was delivered at a recent town council meeting. So firstly, I'd like to apologise to those councillors who's going to sit through some of the same information. But I know on that evening, public questions got a little bit bigger than what we anticipated and, and the focus sort of changed more from, from that to, to whatever they were talking about. And I don't want to get into that too much, but so I just thought it was quite nice. This is the last meeting of this year for this committee. It's just to run through one or two of Katie's slides and just pick out how much success and her team of Amber and volunteers have actually achieved with the Guildhall hub. I mean, our vision at the time was to develop a grade two listed building as a heritage hub and to regenerate the marketplace to excite people of Thetford about this heritage site. And I think overwhelmingly, she's done that over the last couple of years. I mean, we have so many success stories and some of the data that's been collected. We've never collected as much informative data as we have through this project. And it's really quite pleasing as well as astonishing that even we have outplayed our expectations and the NHLF are absolutely chuffed a bit with what the team have delivered. Remember we looked at the Guildhall partly to improve access? And I think again, that's overwhelmingly done that, simply not just access to new events, but access with people and an inclusive audience. So just on the screen, you see a little timeline, so it's happened quite quickly. We kicked off the year with a Punjab event, which actually set the bar quite high because there was a couple of thousand people that attended that event. So again, if you're going to benchmark anything from your launch, you've got to step up. But I think what we've done over the last few years is we've done exactly that. You can see on this slide, the visitor numbers. So from that September 21, it shows, you know, quite a few people have attended that month, partly because of the Punjab event. It was a slight decrease as you'd expect because you're not living up to that benchmark from a standing start. But as you can see, it primarily increases all the way through to September of last year, where I think that data finishes. But again, as the 55% there shows that there's been a 55% increase from those visitors that attended in September 21 to the data collected in September 22. So again, huge, huge improvement. The tea room again has been a real success story. It's hard to set up any new business, if you like, in this day and especially on the back of Covid. But I think we've done outstandingly well on, on that. And as you can see, the slide shows again, apart from a couple of little dips. And I think one of those was some slight restrictions as a result of Covid again. We've done, we've increased all the way through. This is the one that I quite like because it, it actually, it actually shows a pie chart which gives you reasons for visiting. And again, it's not just the tea room, although that's successful. There's a big slice of the pie that shows that. But it's also the performances that Katie and her team are putting on, that's the grey part, that's the grey segment. Again, huge proportion of the reasons for visiting. But we've got a great educational programme. So there's young kids that are coming into the Guildhall that they've never done before. And other hirers are now taking it out because again, it's been put on the map. The Carnegie has always been something that people see. But the Guildhall, as we all know, if you've been councillors for a while, we've struggled in the past partly because of access. The location again, the big blue section, as you would expect, most of the visitors come from Thetford. But again, the next biggest, well, the next biggest two slices are from a wider Breckland region, which again, is something that we've never done and Breckland's quite a big area. But also the grey one is the rest of the UK. So we now are attracting visitors or actually we're giving people something else to visit that are already coming from elsewhere to visit the Dad's Army, the Ancient House Museum and Charles Brereton. So again, as a heritage hub, we are tending to play our part. Again, most of the, the gender splits are slightly in favour of females as you'd expect. I mean, we do tend to have a lot of customers in the tea room that like their teas and afternoon teas and coffee. But again, you know, 40% of male visitors, you know, is a good, is a good spread as well. The age demographic is again, this is, this is my favourite slide actually. Because when you look at that pie, it's pretty equally balanced through ages from under 18 right the way through to over 65. And again, they're fairly equal proportion. So again, it shows one, our education programme is very, very successful because that's the big slice with the under 18s. But also there's something for everyone because every single age group has some kind of visitor segment there. So that's really, really pleasing. So we've got the, the sphere of different opportunities, activities and events that are appealing to the widest possible audience we can. And again, this slide shows, we were right to spend a lot of money on extending that porch way, putting in a ramp and more steps that are more able to get people in with disabilities. So of all the visitors that wanted to fill in this particular feedback, 40% of them said that they had some kind of disability. And they, and I'm sure that would have been more like single figures with the old entrance to the, to the Guildhall. And what you've got to remember is when people with disability issues, when they came into the old Guildhall, they couldn't even use the toilet because we didn't have one, we have now. So our facilities have been improved immensely and we're paying, you know, real dividends to, to do that. So impact on Thetford so far, we can show that, as I've just given some anecdotal evidence earlier, we are benefiting, reinvigorating the rest of the town because outside of the Guild, the Guildhall, people are benefiting, not just our market traders. We've got another shop called Putting on the Shambles that's doing a roaring trade and a, and a welcome addition to, to the Thetford scene. So there are plans for new shops in Thetford and hopefully we can. But footfall will improve with more events because the slides have just shown you that's the, that's the result of it. Again, these children are the next heritage legacy for our town. They come and learn all about the folk of the Guildhall and our famous sons and daughters. And they walk away with a heritage hero certificate. So, and that's working as well because on a regular basis, we get children and these two weeks with the Easter break will be a case in point. You will get children hauling down their parents to show them the things that they've learned. All our tables in the tea room, as you know, are all wrapped with information. And they'll say, look mum and dad, this is what we learnt about homes and cave or, or whatever. So again, fantastic facility that we've got. So all of this tells us that because of the investment from the NHLF, because of the support and investment from the town council, this building a few years ago, when I first came, councillors were talking about moss-balling the Guildhall, shutting the doors. And now we have a building that's not just being used, that will be generating an income that will make that more resilient for future use. So it's been an excellent story and I'm just so pleased to be able to report that to the committee.
Then issue indicates.
Yeah, just to say that I concur completely what David said. I spent a relatively long time in the, in the tea room and it's really nice that people talk to each other in there and, and see things. What I was inspired by on the, on the pie chart was the amount of 18-year-olds and that are coming in there and everything because people like me go in that cup of tea and a piece of cake or something. But to get the 18-year-olds in the building and everything, it's so important that we interact with our younger population and everything. Well done David.
Well, just, just to go, the reason for that Dennis is because our education programme with, with regard to the bit was focused on six Thetford schools. But because, you know, educationists often meet and network and talk to each other, that message has got out wider and wider. And we are now being sort of talked to by schools in West Suffolk. So we had 30 law students from the Abbey Academy in, in Bury St Edmunds that came to the Guildhall to learn about the justice system in the 1700s and how it's differed from today's. Wyndham is another high school that's, you know, regularly wanting to come to Thetford to learn about our history. So again, on the bake, on the back of success, it's, it's producing more success stories. So they've, they've really done a fantastic job.
Well done.
Councillor Hollis please.
Just really to say that Katie and Amber deserve pats on the back. They've done a really, really good job, which has been shown on, on the paper. And the team have done very well as well. So I'd like to thank all them and it's not made my last few years.
Totally right.
Barbara, you've worked very hard and yeah, thank you. And it's really highlighted the town, as you say, we've got more people coming from, the education bit is brilliant, was brilliant. I mean, you know, kids learning about the history of the town and that is sort of a lapse somewhere sometimes, isn't it? Because it sort of puts to backburner. But yeah, for highlighting that, well done to the team, Katie and Amber and obviously David and the rest of the teams. Thank you.
I'd just like to say how welcoming a place it is. I mean, in the 50 years I've lived in Thetford, apart from visiting the art gallery once and that's under a cup of tea there, you know, it's, it's the atmosphere, walking there and the tea room staff are very welcoming. And I'd just like to say, can you bring back the puppet chairs please? Because that was my, that was my favourite.
It's a mess now, rather than a drain on the thing it used to be.
It is, and the building is an absolute beautiful building. I absolutely adore that building.
If we put in requests, can we have the fishermen singers?
No, well.
You know what, I love it.
Actually, we did put a request in for some shanty singers for Whitson, but unfortunately they were booked. So we're hoping to bring them back through the heritage weekends in September. So we will, we will get those. I mean, some of our performances are outgrowing the tea room. So where we've trialled it as a, as a more intimate performance area. But we are improving, we've just bought a new sound desk to be dedicated to the large court. We're going to put some new curtains up, we've got some lights to go in there. So again, we can increase the attendance by moving some of those events into the large court as well, which will mean that we can make the whole experience of coming to the Guildhall for an event a lot better because people can come and use the tea room as a bar, maybe even come and have a pre-meal before they go into the performance. So there's lots of ideas that we've got that we're going to introduce over the next year.
Anybody else? Yes, Stuart please.
Obviously the project's been a great success and I've been banging on for years to get it more accessible and it's really pleasing to see that that has occurred both inside and out. We had a two-year project with Katie and Amber there. I've always been concerned about the legacy and how we continue that David. Obviously I don't want to tread on personnel's toes or anything like that. But I would hate to see suddenly without funding for those positions that we are unable to continue with the great work or the, the volume of work that we're doing. Because outreach is such an important. Because outreach is such an important thing to do to schools, not just in the town, but further afield. Have you got any comments on that or guidance?
So I will, I will make a comment. It's probably not really for me to say, but I'm going to say it anyway because lots of people are being controversial about things. So why not join in? So in the budget, and we did have a conversation because Katie's contract with the NHLF actually finishes at the end of May. So obviously, she's quite concerned about her future. So we did have a conversation last week about that. In the budget, I can assure anybody who's interested that Katie's salary and position has been ring fenced. So hers is not in jeopardy. Amber's is a twenty hour contract that actually runs through to the end of November. So we are really working hard to generate that kind of income resilience that we can continue with Amber. We are trying to source additional funding that can carry on a wider educational programme. The Heritage Hero scheme is a case in point. It's something that some of the funders are really, really interested in because it's an ongoing legacy. So again, Amber would lead that. So I think by November, she's secure till November anyway, by November, I am very confident that we will be in a position where we can continue Amber's contract as well.
Here, here.
Yes, I think there was a few points that were brought up there that are worth revisiting. That whole British values and democracy piece is a golden thread that runs through the national curriculum. And schools are required to focus on that. And we are in an incredibly privileged position here in Thetford with Thomas Paine, with Dr Menz, with Princess So Fire, the suffragette, that that heritage and history is there. Rather excited about the opportunity for sea shanties. We'll have to brush up on my knowledge of the lyrics of We're Bound for South Australia. Because again, that will fit in with the cable and homes thing. And there is so much there. And I have to say, it's been a privilege being able, as my Breckland role, to bring in support from that side of things with the Market Town Initiative to enable the Town Council to deliver those aspirations. I know there have been flippant comments about a load of fairy lights. It's not. It's about strategic infrastructure, going in and supporting those increasing costs that the Town Council has experienced in improving that electricity upgrade. So it makes it more attractive for our market traders, who everybody says they want to see more of. So if we can facilitate that, we should improve the opportunities for our events on the marketplace. So I think that's really key and demonstrates that that investment in local facilities reaches far wider than just the residents of the town. You know, the four hundred square miles nearly of Breckland and further afield. You know, it's really exciting that we are being seen as that cultural and heritage pivot point within the district. And I think it's, you know, something that we need to keep working on. And I will be proud to support for my next two years as a county councillor at least.
Here, here.
Any other questions on that, please? Super. In that case, we will move on to the next item, which you can see behind you, which is Civic Links partnership to discuss and agree a way forward relating to a request to explore a new partnership link with a town in Ukraine. So I'd been contacted by a mayor of an area that's slightly set up differently in Ukraine. And he's responsible for about twenty one thousand people with a mixture of urban-like ourselves, but also rural. And the irony is, their pig trade is nearly as big as the locality's pig trade in Thetford and around Thetford. And I had a conversation and said, it's not in my gift to be able to explore this further. I can only take it back to the committee. And it's very much about cultural exchanges, sharing heritage. They've got some fantastic heritage sites over there. And they're going through this period of what they deemed as decentralisation. So again, looking at your locality and supporting that, they were looking to build up business links, education links. They have two and a half thousand young people in nine schools. There are six kindergartens with six hundred and seventy one young people. You know, there's a huge cultural offering there as well. And I have to say, I'm rather envious of their medicine facilities because they have a hospital and they're not suffering with issues with dentists. You know, there's sport, there are huge elements of tourism. They have thirteen ancient monuments in the area and some amazing wooden-built church structures. So that's quite exciting. So my ask is, are we able to run that video?
I don't think I can, actually. I'm not sure.
Stuart, play with that. Yes, councillor Hollis.
Is this just to agree to it being looked into?
Yeah, explore it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can't sign up to anything. And it's not going to be twinning in that old sense that frankly, it was a bunch of old people doing their holidays at the end, rather than exploring the links. That it should be in terms of our young people making those relationships. And I think also very, very mindful that the world suddenly became very smaller back at the end of February last year, when this was on our doorstep and the communities across this country rallied round to go, no Putin, rock off, you're out of order.
To answer, what area is this?
So they are just outside of Leith.
You mean, okay, the west?
Yeah, so they are closer to the Polish border than, yeah. And whilst they have had some experience within the current affairs, they have been kept quite away from it. So they're about forty K north-east of the administrative centre of Leith region. Yeah, is, they have a lot in common with us. They are a smaller population. But it was quite interesting finding out about some of the big businesses that were there. And probably those of you that are more well-established and older within the town will remember the industries that we used to have here. So yeah, chipboard producers and production of pallets. So there's that link with the forestry as well. And I felt, just sort of, I felt that we had a lot in common. I felt it was worth coming to you guys and saying, can we explore it further? Obviously, I am only one person. I cannot make that decision. Yes, Brenda.
Can I just say, because this is the last meeting really, one, can we make that decision? Or can we say that we've made the decision that we'd liked it to be looked into? Then it gets passed on to the next civic committee.
There isn't.
Because I'm not sure whether we can say, because we can all sit and say, do you know what, it's a fantastic idea. Because you're saying about pilots, we make pilots in Thetford, you know, we do, you know, there is a lot the same. But we could say yes, and then the next committee says no.
And that can always happen regardless of any decision that we make, if you get enough signatories as per standing orders and vote to reopen the discussion. I am not asking for a decision to be made. I'm asking for permission to enable this to be explored further. Yes, please.
Just understand in why they contacted us. Is it a programme that Ukraine towns are outreach and trying to find partners because of the current situation that they're looking to broaden their ties with the West? And also, capacity is an issue in terms of whatever twinning facility, it may not be a full twinning, it may be just a relationship. But also, who is going to administer that? If the twinning association is finished, what civic links we do have upon the Town Council to maintain, you know, the odd occasion where we have a visitor or we go over there. So I think, you know, we need to create that capacity if we are going to take this further, so that we do justice to it.
Yeah, no, I fully agree. And I think it needs to be more what twinning was supposed to be about in its initial concept back in the fifties and sixties. It is about having those economic relationships as well, businesses talking to each other.
For civic links.
We can do the civic part, but that's just such a small piece of it. And, you know, frankly, our, unless you have a personal relationship with some of our twin towns, and I'm proud to say that I do, you know, we hosted, you know, students here when nobody else was prepared to as a family and did it as a direct family. And that benefit continues today in those friendships, those understandings and those explorations. To go back to your first question, this actually came up before the current conflict situation. Yes, it is something that towns and regions in Ukraine are looking at. And yeah, if the translations were correct on my initial meeting, they said we would be far further down the road. You know, we wanted to do this, potentially two years before this happened. You know, there was the whole Covid thing, that kind of got in the way. And then that delayed. And then you have a load of tanks rolling in, which do tend to distract you from, you know, reaching out and doing the economic development that is so important for both our areas. And it was the similarities in that respect that I thought were incredibly important and just to bring businesses together as well.
Can I just say something? And I might be getting, I might be going off on a tangent, but hopefully you'll understand where I'm coming from. The civic links has always been, you know, we had the, obviously, we had the civic links outside. Not the civic links, we had the twinning committees. But now you've got the civic links. Now, I think, how will you do it? I don't know. You've got, you've got civic links, that civic links, although it sits in this committee, it could be a link outside of this committee so that you have the businesses in that meeting. And that's formed your civic committee that feeds back to the main council committee. Do you understand what I'm saying? So that is the way that you're getting businesses involved with other countries, schools, anything. That's where it needs to come from. Because a councillor, as you say, can't just do that, you know. But you could, if you set up a committee outside, although it's run by the council, it could be outside it. It's just a fault, because I can see, I can see where we've gone wrong. Because we're trying to do it, well, we come to it, you know, unless we've all got businesses.
And we should be doing it.
No, we should be.
And be demonstrated with our delivery of the marketplace and Guildhall project that actually collaboration is the way forward. We are greater than the sum of our parts, you know, when we work together. And we can deliver more. Dennis.
Yeah, well, pardon my language, but well done. We really should act as a facilitator to help the rest of the town get involved in it. Because if you're going to have civic links with places, it's got to be the whole town involved in it. So rather than do it ourselves and everything else, as you said, Brenda, we couldn't do it. We should be just there to help facilitate the actions and move it forward and get the businesses involved. But not only the business, some of the other organisations we have in this town and everything, and build on that. So, yeah, I'm in support of this, but only with the idea that we broaden it out a lot more than we did when we, as you say, when I got to travel places as a member of that group.
Well, I've been to Portuguese, we never ever done anything with that, did we? And why? Because it's not something that we can go and do as councillors. It's something that businesses.
Yes, indeed, a broad community effort. And yeah, this is just kind of the first step in exploring that. Yeah, if it turns out that the community go nah, then the community go nah, and we stay inward looking. Fine. But if we don't try, we will never know.
But if we give them information to help them understand the connections we have, then surely they will see the better picture.
Yeah, I know. I mean, this came about from the Cabinet Member for Economic Development at the County Council going, Jane, these guys are incredibly similar. Is there a way that we could explore it? You know, so we're already getting that sort of input from that county council side of things. You know, again, is it something that potentially we need to not necessarily specifically own ourselves, but facilitate? I think you're right.
My word for today.
Anybody else, please? So the decision required is to discuss and agree action plan. So the first question is, is this committee happy to continue the exploration of developing the links?
Yes.
Does anybody object to that? Okay, so we'll explore the links further, being mindful of developing those business links, heritage and cultural links, and the educational links. I think those are the three key aspects. Yeah, and as David said earlier, we've demonstrated that actually, when we work with the youth and younger members of our community, they are our best spokespeople and actually potentially our best advocates, aren't they? So is there anything else that is an idealised situation that you'd like to have from it? Obviously, it's not going to be a holiday destination in the short term.
No, I think, you know, because, I mean, Stuart should be mayor next year. So it's the ideal place is to go to your breakfast forums, meet up with them. Any people in Thetford that don't go there, you can just sort of pop in some of the men in Thetford, would you be interested? And that way forward. And obviously, Katie with the schools say the same thing. Because the young children love learning new things. It's amazing. When you think, well, I can go back to when I was at school, you just went to school, you see the mayor once a year at Christmas when you're done your little poem on the stage, that was it. But, you know, nothing else was done. There was no culture, no nothing. Where now, children are learning everything and they're keen to, they're keen to learn. They don't just sit there. This is boring. They want to get in there and do it, don't they? So to me, you know, the more the children get involved as well, that'd be great. Because as you say, for parents, like, oh, my child knows parents, this is friend daddy. Well, how did you meet them then? Well, we went, granny went over there with the twinning society and because she saw him one time and they've made friends. They've grown up as friends, you know, it's that sort of thing, isn't it?
I mean, there is a huge sporting community out there. So it would be also worth utilizing the links and connections that we have with various sporting groups to see if those can be explored further. Appreciate that, yeah, some things may not be able to happen given the current situation. But there's no reason why we can't start talking and exploring. And they're very much about sharing your best practice, ideas that have worked, legitimately, ideas that haven't worked, and the why and the wash-up from it. And I know Hert have been incredibly keen to get that more business-like engagement going. There's the hydrogen production side of things they have for alternative energies and that. And also in Hert, I mean, I don't think anybody realizes that they're a huge centre for television and entertainment. There's a lot of filming goes on, there's a lot of technology that goes on there. And there are opportunities whilst we're developing those side of things, you know, in the greater Thetford region area that actually we could explore more and do better.
When you look at Habs building in Germany, a lot of people in England go to Germany to get all their windows and everything because of the fantastic stuff that they built.
Triple G's built-in shutters and actually last. So are we content with the continuation of the exploration on that?
Absolutely.
It feels a bit woolly and washing light, but as you say, I didn't want to carry on going down the route, talking to someone if that's not you. Yes.
There's no harm in investigating or talking to people and that. And as you say, I mean, the days of holidays, as it's been said, has gone. People come forward. So I, and I think if you're opening a business link with them and this educational and let's say the heritage and history and that, I can't see a bad thing in it, really, to be honest, because it teaches the kids.
It's good, it's good for businesses, isn't it?
And, yeah, and if it's just some kind of communication between the businesses that somebody might end up asking for half a dozen pallets from over there, that's, they can't make it. Do you know, it's just them silly little things, idle silly things. But they, I call. I call silly things. But they, they, I call trying to open trays.
Absolutely. Super. Is that okay for that, David? Thank you. So we then move on to community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. I've got one thing on my list already. Anybody? So how are we promoting the street parties?
Party? Um, so the street party has, uh, the information has gone out. So, uh, there will be, um, some adverts that are going out. Um, they will be going in the, um, they're, they're going into, uh, W I publication for, which will go out before May. There'll be, uh, some information going in about Thetford. That will, actually, it'll be the May edition, but they're delivering it because of the, the bank holiday weekends, they're delivering it at the back end of April, apparently. So they will hit people. So there'll be the last wash up, if you might, last call to action. But, um, but yeah, we, we haven't had an overwhelming reaction about coronation events, to be honest. Um, there seems to be a bit of apathy around it. Um, but we'll, we'll ramp up our advertising and promotion of that.
Before I come to you, Dennis, so specifically, we've had offers of support regarding the screen event from the air cadets, the army cadets and, um, Cloverfield Community Church wanted to relocate their Messi Saturdays and actually run their Messi Saturday on the marketplace. So it became more of an event. What's happened with that, please?
So, um, I haven't contacted the church, uh, simply because, um, it is a market. Uh, and this weekend we will be rejigging the market because of the electric. Hopefully the electrics will be finished. Been a bit of a nightmare, uh, this week. It should have happened on Monday. It did happen on Monday, but it's progressed through various different reasons all the way through. It should be completed hopefully by today. So once I know where space is, because we're not going to move the market, um, but we also need to have the screen. There needs to be an area where we protect the screen. That's our commitment to, uh, to having the screen being paid by Breckland. We need to have an area where the messy play can be. Uh, we think we've got a space, so that's fine. Um, they also demand that, uh, the screen has marshalled. Um, we are massively short-staffed at the moment. It's getting worse by the day. Uh, we had another member of staff, um, hand in their reservation yesterday. So we're going to be one down for the next two months. Um, so, but we will use the, uh, the cadets as sort of marshalling. And hopefully they'll come back on the Sunday and be the sort of, uh, pointers to which table people have reserved and things like that. So we will be using.
After the screen overnight.
So it's not, it's not going overnight. It's coming, done, gone. Um, and there will be a technician with it all the time, but that's for technical issues, not to protect the screen. But, you know, we've, we've got it sorted. Um, but I'm sure we can get a space for messy play because again, it'll be nice. Because if, if parents are sitting down watching the coronation, the last thing you want is kids getting bored. They can go to messy play. So we, we want it to happen. So we will, they, they will be there, you know?
So sorry, Dennis, please.
Just for us ladites in this world, um, are you putting a big poster up in our rotunda?
So, um, Hazel's putting posters up about all our stuff. What we, what we have actually said is we need, um, we need another poster site outside Carnegie because we're filling our current one. Um, but we need more poster sites, um, in and around the town. Uh, that's a, that's something we discussed in the past. We need to try and find those locations to do that. Um, but, but Hazel is feeding our information to, um, several of the businesses that have been willing to display it. So I think we get our message out. A lot of our shows are, are pretty sold out, if not reasonable attendances. So the message is getting out there. Um, so I've, I've got every confidence still.
Actually, the apathy is due to the weather because really with non-stop rain, you just don't feel like, you know, I think maybe a little bit of sunshine, everyone has sort of rushed and booked a table and, and feel a bit more positive about venturing out.
I think the trouble with the King's event, uh, the King's event though, is that, um, a lot of people are doing their own thing. So
People will always do their own thing with it.
Probably be a last minute rush for the tables.
And, and that's one of those things that we deal with.
Yeah, well, that is what it's about, isn't it? It's about street parties and, you know.
Communities coming together and however they see fit to do that. That's their choice. We're not going to dictate to them. We're just giving them a facility and not, if they want to. Anything else on community engagement, please? Committee officers update, anything you'd like to add to all David?
Nothing, nothing changed.
In that case, thank you all for attending. That's it. That's our last one of this. Term. Thank you all so much for your help and.